All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Des Moines City Council Meeting for February 25th. Quickly, prior to the start of this session, we have a message from our own Councilmember, Westergaard. Linda, would you like us to stand up?
Only if they would like to.
All right.
Please.
So those of you who would stand up with us, it's time to hear our message from our councilmembers.
God, we ask your blessings on all who are gathered here. Remind us that no matter where we live, we are neighbors and that we have a responsibility to protect and serve the least among us, including the children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, and those who are alone. Give us the wisdom and the courage to know and do what is right, and may we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and the spirit of love. Amen.
All right, good afternoon. Let's call this meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take a roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Ozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. There is one amendment. We're going to have an extra item as request from Councilmember Joe Gatto to discuss snow removal on sidewalks. With that, somebody give me a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Item three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through thirty-seven. These are routine items, generally speaking, that are enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, either a member from the audience or a member of our city council, asks to have one pulled for further discussion, debate, or clarification. This evening, item four F, councilman, well, actually, is that four F?
Yep.
Okay. Four F, Councilmember Gatto registers a conflict. Item four J, Councilmember Coleman votes no. Item six B, Councilmember Mandelbaum wishes to speak. And item twenty-seven, Councilmember Gray votes no. Are there any others anyone would have to or would like to pull for further discussion?
I see none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move.
All right. Ask everybody to vote. All right, item six B are public improvements. This is ordering construction of the following. B is the Evelyn K. Davis Park basketball court lighting, receiving bids March 12th of nineteen and setting the date of hearing of March 25th of nineteen. The engineers estimated $67,000. Council Communication number nineteen dash zero six seven. Councilmember Mandelbaum.
And I mainly pulled this, I think there's some folks from the community who wanted to talk about this project, and I wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity. I know we worked with a lot of folks, including a number of folks from AMIS, about providing lighting at this park for the basketball program there. I think it's a tremendous step forward for the community, you know, the police do a great job in the program that they do in collaboration with the community. And this will provide more of that type of opportunity for positive interaction and engagement with the neighborhood. So wanted to call that out and then also make sure the folks who are here had an opportunity to say what they wanted to say as well.
All right, are there any other speakers on this item that would like to say something? We've got one speaker. All right.
I'm John Royal, eighteen thirty-eighth Street in Des Moines. I'm president of Riverbend Neighborhood Association and a member of AMIS. And we're greatly in support of this. We really appreciate the city considering this. They ran a successful program last year, and what we found was it's actually as much a public safety issue as anything else, just having the lighting there. Unfortunately, we have some people in our community who are not the greatest in terms of wanting to be good neighbors. We're doing some activities which were not particularly favorable. The lighting tended to move them out of the area as well as the programming, and so we really appreciate and would like to have this continue.
John, thank you.
With that, I'll move item six B.
All right.
It's a great project. Absolutely.
And I want to thank AMIS for your input for this last year and every, everything that you've done to engage, because that's what we do, the six of us engage with neighborhoods and interested groups that have some really good ideas, and we appreciate you bringing those forward. So thank you.
Seven yes.
With that, that completes the consent agenda. Takes us to item thirty-eight, which are ordinances first consideration. Thirty-eight, amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. By the way, this is Council Communication number nineteen dash zero seventy-five. A is the code modification related to the Woods of Copper Creek Plats, one through four, and Ruby Rose Ridge residential development. B is a code modification related to the removal of traffic signal at intersection of Fourth Street and Walnut Street. C is a code modification related to the resident parking districts and permits. And D is a code modification related to special parking permit fees. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comment on item thirty-eight municipal code changes? Seeing none? Could we have a motion?
I will move item thirty-eight, A, B, C, and D.
All right, thank you. Mr. Coleman?
I'm a yes. No opposition, nothing. Should we move the second and third readings and save the paper? Yeah. A second motion, or do you want to?
No.
Just make that part of it.
I will waive the second and third readings, please.
Right. I guess we're going to re-vote.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Takes us to item thirty-nine. These are communications reports, speakers regarding loud motorcycles and other passenger vehicles in the downtown. If we have some speakers, we'd ask you all to come forward at this time. Looks like we have a couple. We've got a couple more.
All righty.
So it looks like we have five? All right. Go ahead.
My name is Austin Lewis. I live at nine one five Mulberry Street, downtown. I am the vice president of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. Last year, I was the president, and I decided to do this vice president role to focus on engaging with our members and representing them and trying to give them a voice. Overwhelmingly, the most important issue that I've heard that was most consistent, but also everyone seemed to have the same opinion, no one seemed to disagree, was the road noise issue. I want to be very specific about what this issue is. We get it, we live downtown, right? We're not concerned with normal traffic noise. We're not concerned with buses. We're not concerned with trucks. We're concerned with people who go out of their way to modify, illegally modify their vehicles to be extremely loud and drive it around the neighborhood. I have a few different examples of where this happens, and it's not the same across the whole neighborhood. So first of all, we get a lot of complaints from the Court Ave area. The Court Ave area, the complaints are mostly about motorcycles revving their engines, not necessarily going really fast, but we'll hear more about these from our neighbors. And then there's, there are also different issues in different areas. So if you go over to the Sculpture Park area, people scoop loop. If you don't know what this is, people are literally coming out, you know, coming downtown, and they race on our streets. They're literally racing. I mean, in addition to being loud and very noisy, it's also very dangerous. We actually heard a story of someone dying while doing this from Sergeant Laura Neely, our police liaison. And then lastly, I live at the corner of Ninth and Mulberry, and this is right at the start of the Ninth Street Bridge, so people like to drive over that bridge as fast as possible with no risk of being pulled over by a cop because there's only two lanes on the bridge. And so it seems like everyone has their own story, and it's a little bit different, but the common issue is that it's extremely loud in our neighborhood, and we're hoping to find a fix for this. This issue has affected our neighborhood for decades. It's nothing new. We've heard, I mean, scooping the loop goes back decades. I've seen articles in the Des Moines Register about this. It's an old tradition, right? But we think it's time to stop now because people are starting to move downtown now in droves. There are apartments being built left and right, and two really tall towers coming in real soon, and this is just going to affect more and more people if we don't address the issue. We believe the best approach for solving this would be a new noise ordinance. We've, we've had a lot of different ideas, but a new noise ordinance that is enforceable, we think, would be the most practical. We've talked to, you know, police officers, and they basically say there are noise ordinances in effect right now, but they're not very enforceable, they're really hard, and there's not much they can do. We also want to make sure that we work with the city. I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't really know anything about, you know, drafting a new noise ordinance. So I want to work with you to figure out what the best solution is for our city. And also, you know, of course, we're focused on the downtown, but if this would make sense to apply to the whole city, then we're open to that as well. My neighbors are here to tell their stories as well, more specifically, so please hear them, and I look forward to working with all of you to solve this issue.
Awesome, thank you.
Hello, I'm Tom Small. I live at three hundred Walnut. I also have a business in the East Village that I've had there for many years. I've lived downtown for fifteen years now, and the motorcycle noise just continues to get louder and louder. And now they have radios that they blare over their mufflers, so it's even more offensive. We reached out to the police, the DNA did, and they cited a state law that makes it hard for them to cite people who have modified mufflers. So I went to our legislators, Bruce Hunter and Senator Visignano, and they looked into the law, and they didn't see why that was a case. So I also found out that the city of Dubuque enforces a motorcycle ordinance, and we've stayed there overnight many times, and they can't rev their engines in downtown Dubuque. And so it slows them down, and it keeps it a lot quieter when they're driving through. In a recent Des Moines Register article, the police said that there haven't been an increase in complaints, and I would suggest that the reason for that is because you just don't think to call the police when somebody's revving their engine and then they're gone. But the noise lasts till three or four in the morning many nights, and it's getting just out of control. So we hope the city takes action. Thank you.
Tom, thank you.
I'm Lloyd Kaufman, and I live at three hundred Walnut downtown also. I'm speaking, I was asked to speak by the Downtown Neighborhood Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to Mr. Mayor and the city council members regarding this issue. For the past twelve years, I've lived at the Plaza condos downtown, and prior to that, I owned a house in the Merle Hay neighborhood for about thirty years. And I too am speaking in support of a more enforceable, posted, street noise ordinance to be implemented, especially downtown, recognizing that we are a neighborhood where thousands of people live and work, and not a playground where the quality of life can be trodden on by those who believe the streets are theirs for fun and entertainment, ignoring others on the road, pedestrians, or those of us living there. I love living downtown at the Plaza. I love it less during the warm days and evenings when our streets are frequently, are frequented with the rumbling and high pitched roaring of these enhanced exhaust systems of motorcycles and pickups, sometimes several at a time. They love to entertain and impress each other with how loud they can be in their constant loop scooping, bouncing their excessive noise off the tall buildings which can go on until 2:00 a.m. They do not promote economic development. They are not spending money downtown while driving around the same routes. Pedestrians are intimidated and cover their ears with their hands. Some of us who live downtown choose to leave town for the weekend, or stay with nearby friends, or wear industrial strength earplugs in our own home. We wish the bikers would take their loud, altered bikes and pickups back to their home, own homes and their own communities and impress each other there, but they know that their communities wouldn't tolerate it. Although police are all over Court Avenue, I also detect their frustration too, and calls to the dispatcher I met with will describe the cycles. Well, exactly where are they are my favorite, will try and get their license number. Anyone downtown can hear those motors and track them as they drive from the Sculpture Garden to East Village, on Locust and Walnut and Grand, and then onto Third and Fourth Street, as they travel down to Court Avenue, often until the bars close. On these occasions, we feel like hostages in our own homes. Many of us are thrilled that this topic is being discussed and considered here, and ask that action be taken to curb these untethered cyclists who see downtown as their personal playground, and that they get the message with some teeth in it that all their night noise and revelry is not welcome in our homes.
My name is Kay Rose Boome, and I live in the Plaza building at three hundred Walnut Street. I'm a member of the DNA, the Des Moines Neighborhood Association. I've lived here for almost six years, and I love everything about downtown living except for the noise. When I first moved here, motorcycles were not much louder than the other traffic, but a couple of years ago, things changed. I started hearing super loud motorcycle sounds. Some are low pitched roars, some are high pitched screams. All are much louder than the other traffic sounds. There's no white noise machine in the world that can cover up these sounds. The problem has steadily gotten worse over the last two summers. We experience this racket every night, but it's especially bad on weekends when it often continues until three in the morning. It makes sleeping very difficult. The only thing that keeps them away is rain. Things have reached the point where I've become obsessed with the weather forecast, desperately hoping for rain on Friday and Saturday nights. I'm not sure that we need any new city ordinances to address this problem. It seems to me that we simply need to enforce the ones that we already have. In a January article in the Des Moines Register, the spokesman for the Des Moines City Police Department said that "Police can cite drivers for having improper mufflers, but there's no enforcement for a motorcycle that's simply loud." However, when I looked up the Des Moines City Noise Ordinance, I found that it does specifically address loud motorcycles. City Ordinance number one four seven one six, sorry, one four seven four six states that anyone operating a motorcycle above eighty-two decibels shall be punished by a criminal or civil penalty. So there is an ordinance prohibiting loud motorcycles, and it does have a penalty. I would like to close with two questions. One, why does the Des Moines Police Department think that they cannot enforce the city noise ordinance? And two, what can we do about that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephen Cuskey. I live in the Plaza, three hundred Walnut Street. I live in the downtown, and I'm happy with the motorcycle noise. Several years ago, I purchased a decibel meter and a range finder to measure noise and distance. On the corner of Third and Court during the afternoon commute, I recorded motorcycle sound levels at a distance of fifty feet. That measured eighty-six, ninety-four, one hundred and six, and two hundred and twenty-five dBA. When the motorcycles returned with the warmer weather, it'll be easy to collect more readings like these. I don't blame any particular motorcycle manufacturer for the situation. I do blame our peculiar culture of motorcycle enthusiasts. Here are the titles of some YouTube videos that might demonstrate the mindset. Number one, how to increase exhaust sound without any modification. Two, how to modify baffles in a Harley exhaust for a deeper throaty tone. Three, deeper throaty exhaust using only a drill. Four, making motorcycle exhaust louder. I believe I have seen motorcycles intentionally startle people using their loud motorcycle sound as a sort of weapon. I wonder if our police have the tools to measure sound levels. I also wonder if our police have the inclination and resources to enforce the sound ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Hi, my name is Art Sluzark, and I live at five twenty-four sixteenth Street downtown for the past three years. I've also worked at Meredith Corporation for the past twenty years, so I'm here on behalf of both today, the business community and as a local residence. While noise is an issue that you've heard volumes about today, one of the real issues, you know, underlying this is public safety. Because not only are motorcycles and the cars loud, but they also are going very fast and preventing and creating a hazard to pedestrians. I want to applaud what the city has done over the last three years in cutting down on loop scooping. It is probably about twenty-five percent of what, of what it was when we first moved in here three years ago. And, and since I've been at Meredith, it's much less than it used to be back in the day. Regular patrols work. We've seen that. They've done a great job of cutting down the loop scooping. We just need to continue at, continue with this summer. I think the police dispatcher knows me by name when I call, and, but it's the only thing that gets, that really gets a response. So I do want to thank you for doing that. I want you to please consider taking what you've heard today very seriously from residents about the noise, and also to think about it as more than just a noise issue, but as a public safety issue. We've created a very livable city now where people want to live downtown with many attractions, but frankly, walking out at night along fifteenth Street and Locust and Grand and trying to cross the street, you're taking your life in your hands sometimes because they just don't obey the traffic laws. So, thank you very much.
Art, thank you. I don't see anybody else, but I turn it to the council and to our ward council member, at least, I'm hopeful that we'll come up with a recommendation to refer this to our staff to bring back a great ordinance.
Yeah, I appreciate all the folks who've, who've come here. You know, I've talked with many of you, Austin and Tom, we've met several times on this. Appreciate you bringing it to the full council. I do think we should look at what we can do to change our ordinance. I know there was one, I think it was Kay who spoke about the fact that we've got a decibel level that's referenced. I think that can be challenging for someone without equipment to measure, and therefore you create a problem. You don't know if, to a naked ear, whether or not something is violating the ordinance, you just know it's loud. I think you can craft potentially an ordinance in a way that makes it easier for someone to enforce without having that level of equipment, and I'd like us to look at that. Dubuque was referenced as an option, and what would be great is if staff could bring back a recommendation, maybe by the beginning of May, so that we can get this ordinance in place in advance of, of the changes this, or in advance of the change in weather this summer, although maybe spring will come early if we're lucky enough, although I guess at this point, it's not really that early. But if we could, we could get a new ordinance in place, and then I will, I've had conversations with Sergeant Neely, and we, I will continue to have conversations with Sergeant Neely about how we might be able to enforce, to send a message that, in particular, the loud motorcycle noise is not welcome. So with that, I would, I would move that piece to, to ask staff to come back with a recommendation by May.
Can I just ask one thing, too? Not only is it ordinance on noise, but also the scooping the loop, which is hard for me to believe people still have the need to do that, but the one-way streets, too, and I know that's part of more the master plan, getting things converted, because it's a straight loop around, so you create a loop, and if you had two ways, that might take care of some of that problem, too, and slow people down. So that's something, I know that's part of the bigger statement, but I think that's a strong proponent of why we should get rid of some of these one-ways.
Yes.
Okay, motion's been made.
Seven yes.
Thank you all for coming down. Appreciate it. And let's see if we can work together to make some improvements. It is past five o'clock. It is officially five oh eight, and we need to quickly move to hearings. Our first hearing items, item forty-three. Item forty-three is on the approval of documents for the vacation of a portion of the East Shawnee Avenue right-of-way adjoining forty-one oh one Amherst Street and conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment to True Bible Baptist Church for a hundred and sixty-eight dollars. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above, the waivers requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Let's go ahead and open the hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak to this item to approve the documents for the vacation. Seeing none? Do we have a motion?
Yes, I will move item forty-three, forty-three A and B.
All right. Item forty-four is on the approval of documents for the conveyance of a fourteen-foot strip of vacated East Market Street between Southeast Sixth and Southeast Seventh Street to Rowett Lofts LLC for one thousand dollars. Anyone here to speak to this item? It's a vacation of a part of East Market Street.
I see none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item forty-four.
Item forty-four is moved. Any comments?
Seven yes.
Item forty-five is on request from Home Opportunities Made Easy, Home, Inc., purchaser to rezone property located at thirteen twenty-one and thirteen twenty-five Fremont Street from R one sixty-one family low-density residential to R two, two-family residential to allow the properties to be combined and to allow development of a two-family dwelling. The property is owned by Community Housing Initiatives. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above. B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Let's open the hearing and see if there's anyone here to speak to this zoning change at thirteen twenty-one and thirteen twenty-five Fremont Streets. Anyone? Seeing none?
I would like to move item forty-five A and B.
Forty-five A and B has been moved. Any comments?
Seven yes.
All right, forty-six. This is regarding request from Fiftieth and Douglas LLC to rezone property located in the vicinity of thirty-nine oh five Fiftieth Street from R one sixty-one family low-density residential to PUD, Planned Unit Development, and for the approval of a PUD conceptual plan, Beverdale Townhomes for the development of approximately two point seven four acres for twenty-one rowhouse, one-story townhomes on a private drive access from Fiftieth Street, subject to conditions, and the motion actually here is to continue to May sixth at two thousand nineteen. And Mr. Manager, I'm sure our community development is watching this one closely. We may have some water issues up there.
Yeah, I was going to say our public works.
Okay. Anybody want to make comment? Otherwise, we're going to hopefully get a motion to move this to continue.
Yes, I'm going to move item forty-six, but I do want to get the city manager's office involved before May sixth, so we can make sure that we're making the right decision as we go forward on this, because this is, what, about the third time, or at least the second?
At least.
At least twice that we've continued it. I'd like to get some resolution on it, so. Move forty-six.
Jill?
Sorry.
Seven yes.
Item forty-seven, these are items regarding property at eleven forty-five and eleven forty-seven Twenty-Fourth Street, Mobley Hill Farms, Inc., continued from January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen meeting. A is to amend the existing Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow Plan Future Land Use designation from low, medium-density residential to neighborhood mixed use to allow for the rezoning to limited NPC neighborhood pedestrian commercial, and expansion of off-street parking for existing multifamily dwellings, and for shared parking for nearby mixed use. B is a hearing on the rezoning, the property from R one sixty, low-density residential to NPC neighborhood pedestrian commercial. C is the first consideration, the ordinance above. And D is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. We'll go ahead and open the hearing. Is there anyone to speak to this?
Just since the last meeting on January 28th, I met with the Drake Neighborhood Association, and they weren't really aware of the proposal. So once I explained it to them, they now support it. They voted to support it, so I have a letter of support from them if you want to see it. I also reached out to tenants, and I have comments from each of them if you want to see that as well, but they all support it basically for convenience and to protect their cars and safety reasons. So just to summarize, the zoning change will make my fiveplexes meet current rental code for parking. It helps my kitchen rental business nearby to use some of that parking. 24th Street is already congested, so it removes cars from the street. And what I didn't mention at the last hearing is that there's a new arts and music venue opening up down the street called XBK or something, and they have very little parking. I mean, but they're approved to have like 200 people in the venue, so they're due to be complete, the construction for that is going to be completed in sometime this year, so I don't know if that'll have a big effect or not, but it has the potential to. So the combination of that, plus my kitchen rental business getting started in the next month or two, could add more parking congestion. And also, I think it just kind of benefits the community because it takes cars off the street, and it also costs the city nothing, so I urge you to support it.
All right. Thank you. Robert? Anyone else to speak on this item?
So.
Josh?
Yeah. So since the last meeting, I did attend the neighborhood meeting and appreciate the outreach to the neighborhood. I think Councilmember Coleman also at the last, the last time this came up, talked about how we should think about what the appropriate use was. And I do think, in consultation with the neighborhood and other council members, that it makes sense to have this be rezoned. What still has not been worked out is the access issue and the concerns about traffic off of the alleyway. I think this works better if it's, the access point comes off of 24th, and I think that should be a condition of the zoning. And that's appreciated. Staff wrote up an alternate, alternative B to 47B. So I'd like this to move forward, but I'd like staff, and I'd like you to work with staff on figuring out a condition to make sure that the access is not off the alley, but is off of 24th Street, so that this is bringing a significant amount of potential traffic this way. I think that's a better accommodation and a way forward that addresses, addresses concerns that were raised by everyone. So that's what I'm prepared to do today and move 47B, alternative B, with the direction that the applicant work with staff on acceptable conditions, particularly to address the access off of 24th.
Anybody? All right. Motion's been made. Good job.
Seven, yes.
All right. Item 48. On citywide parking ramp control equipment improvements, resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Kester Construction Company, Inc., Paul Kester, President, $1,297,747. Council Communication Number 19-065A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Citywide parking ramp.
I see none, Mr. Mayor. I'll move 48 and 48A.
All right. Any comments? Item's been moved.
Seven, yes.
Item 49. On market district sanitary sewer resolution proving plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as the Underground Company Limited, Dwayne Brookhart, President, $315,921. Council Communication Number 19-069A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's open the hearing. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none?
I will move item 49 and 49A.
All right. Thank you. Any comments? Anybody? Item's been moved.
Seven, yes.
Item 50. Item 50 is on fire station number three improvements, resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Trinity Construction Group LLC, Jackie Good, Vice President, $62,009. Council Communication Number 19-068A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Anybody to speak to this item? All right.
I would like to move item 50 and 50A and just say that we have a responsibility to keep our residents safe, but we also have a responsibility to our first responders. And this fire station is one of the oldest fire stations. It was built in the early 50s. When I, I stopped by the station not too long ago, and they, they have these makeshift steps that they've had to use because the, the metal steps are worn out. They're so old that they're just, they're just worn out. So this is a long time in coming, and it really needs to be done. So I'm pleased that we have this on the agenda tonight, and I look forward to all of the first responders having a, an updated, safe place to work.
All right. Item's been moved. Any other comments? Discussion?
Seven, yes.
All right. Takes item 51. On Parks and Trails Storm Water Repair Contract Category G, resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as RW Excavating Solutions, LC, Dan E. Wilson, Managing Member, $242,586. Council Communication Number 19-070A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. We'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here to talk to item 51A, Parks and Trails Storm Water Repair? Seeing none? Could we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Item's been moved. Any other comments?
Seven, yes.
Item 52. On Ruwan Connector, resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, and engineers estimate receiving and filing bids, Council Communication Number 19-074. Anyone in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none?
I'll move this. Again, this is the next step in, in some great work being done by the Des Moines Waterworks Park Foundation, and it's an exciting project to see moving forward.
Right.
Have both the city and the Waterworks agreed to call it the Ruwan Connector? Yeah. I've just seen information about it that doesn't refer to it that way, so maybe ask staff to make sure when we're dealing things that.
Older history? Or more recent?
Today's paper.
Okay. We'll check on it.
That's not his fault.
Seven, yes.
Let's note that it's 5:23, and this is, ends our hearing items, takes us back to item number 40. Item 40 is speakers regarding the local option sales tax. Anyone who has a comment or two, we would invite you to step up. I think there was a couple that asked to have it put on. Joe, I think you were one of those. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
My name is Joe Grandinette, and my home is at 6215 Gordon Avenue. I oppose the one-cent option sales tax. There's the judicial, the executive, the legislative branches of government. Where is the fourth estate? The press, profession of journalism, to frame political issues. Who is the gatekeeper of our tax dollars? The press? No. Big article in this morning's paper. Russell Vine used to be, George Flag used to be, and Bob Mickel. Who's going to step up on the city council? Local option sales tax is a regressive tax. It hurts the poor, the middle class, and the elderly. If I was on the city council, these are the things that I would do instead of raising the option or giving, coming to a vote. I'd freeze all the wages for this, from the city. I would cut every budget by 3% except for the police and the firemen, and work with the other intergovernmental agencies so that you can reduce your budget. You'll have plenty of money there because there's a lot of waste. The bike people need to come up with some money. $15 for a license, and if you buy a bicycle that's worth over $200, you can bump it up to $20. They do this in the state of Oregon. Charge an earnings tax. Anyone living outside of Des Moines, but get a paycheck from any entity inside Des Moines will pay $300 per year. $300 per year. Many people come from all over and drive here and drive home to their bedroom communities, and they get their paycheck in Des Moines. Kansas City, Missouri, has done this for the last 45 years, an earnings tax. We need to do the same because people have these good jobs, and they go home to their sleeping, their, their communities, and they take that big paycheck with them, and they don't stay in Des Moines. Collect all the fines that are due, like the 1.4 million back and overdue parking tickets. Pay to play like for the skateboard park. We charge for the ice park. We have to pay $56,000 in liability insurance, so why aren't we charging for the skateboard park? I'm going to skip around a little bit. You gave $4 million to build a hotel. I thought we didn't have any money. You raised the property taxes before, and now you want to raise the sales tax, and you're going to reduce the property taxes. But then again, what you'll do is you'll, the value of your home will go up, so you have to pay more. It's a big game. You subsidized Merroway Mall, and you say you don't have any money. Malls are closed all over the country. More people are buying online with no sales tax, and we are raising ours. It doesn't make any sense. All the roads and service sewers in our city are a mess. No one has ever addressed this. Why should we trust you? You had your giveaways, tax dollars to the hotels downtown, HIV, and a tunnel underneath Fleer Drive, and all of the bike pass to the tune of $750,000. Who's going to be the stewards of our money? I'm here as a, as a conversation, and the easy way out is to tax the people. But that's not what you should do. You should find all avenues of revenue before you set up a sales tax. So if it's 7% this year, and two more years, you'll make it 8%, and then so forth and so on. Just raise it up. Now, I'm not here, it's very difficult to come here and say these things because we elect you officials to do the job. That's your job to be stewards of our money. And when you propose another additional one-cent sales tax, it hurts the poor, the middle class, and the elderly the most. They're the ones that have to buy the goods that cost. The people that are wealthy, they don't care if it goes up. They have plenty of money. So, I appreciate you giving my time here. It's very important that if this fails, and even if it does pass, you should look into these other ways of getting money. And I would support the thing from Kansas City because this has been going on for 45 years. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker.
I'm Alan Demarest. I live at 2929 Beaver in Des Moines, Beverdale, and I'm an AARP volunteer. Specialize, our biggest interest is in livable communities and in infrastructure. I've lived in Beverdale for 31 years, on Hickman for 23 years. I speak in strong support of Public Measure A. Why? Well, Des Moines is a very enjoyable place to live, but it's really kind of important to keep it that way. Des Moines needs money to rebuild and support infrastructure. Real estate goes up year after year. Can't meet all the needs. Aging in place, which we strongly support, becomes very difficult because as you stay in a house and your taxes go up, but your income doesn't, you can't stay there very long. Des Moines needs money to rebuild and support infrastructure. Real estate tax goes up year after year, but it can't meet all the needs. Aging in place, as I said, becomes an impossibility. Where was it going? Safe, clean parks, fire department support, storm sewers. Living on Hickman, I've had some experience with that. Safer streets. We have crosswalks that need painting. Paint costs a lot of money. Dangerous intersections. Hickman and Beaver is a good example. Don't know what to do about that, but then we need to support police services because that is important. Bike lanes need marking. Sidewalks that are wide and safe need to be taken care of so people can walk. I have a little difficulty with that, but I still go walking. 50% of that is going to help hold real estate tax at its current levels. And people worry about what's going to happen to that money, except it's going to be audited every year, so they'll know where that money is going. And that's an important part, I think, of this public measure. So, thank you very much. I strongly support proposition, or Public Measure A.
Alan, thank you.
Thank you.
Suzette Jensen, 3127 Thompson Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. Coming here tonight, I dodged a few potholes. There are a lot of them around the city, and this one happens to be on Guthrie, which is a major traveled street on the east side of town. On Thursday, I was headed for a meeting on Fleer Drive and saw a young man walking through foot-deep snow because there was no sidewalk. It was hard, crusted snow because it had been dumped on by the city. We desperately need sidewalks on busy streets in this city. I served on the Des Moines Park Board for 16 years, and in 16 years, we never had a year when we had more money than we'd had the year before. I sat through a lot of budget meetings for the city and saw other departments deal with the same thing. We've been dealt some blows by the state of Iowa who changed tax codes so that we can't collect, or they've changed who we can collect on, and it's made it difficult for the city. I have family that on, that serves on the Des Moines Fire Department. My uncle served, my brother-in-law served, and now my nephew serves. I also have family in law enforcement. They're with Polk County, but I understand the drain on the law enforcement too. We need, we desperately need another fire department on the eastern side of town because we are spread far too thin. I see the needs. I have recognized the options that you have, and I support Public Measure A. And I hope that on March 5th, we'll not only be able to celebrate Mardi Gras, but we'll be able to celebrate a win.
It's Mardi Gras. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzette.
we are spread far too thin. I see the needs. I have recognized the options that you have, and I support Public Measure A. And I hope that on March 5th, we'll not only be able to celebrate Mardi Gras, but we'll be able to celebrate a win.
It's Mardi Gras. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzette.
Mayor, County, Councilman Coleman, and other members of the council. My name is Deb Brewer-Cottler. I reside at 4418 Bel Air Road. I am part of the Beverdale and Meredith neighborhoods. I am here speaking on behalf of Public Measure A. My purpose for addressing you this evening is twofold. First and foremost, I come to you on behalf of our family to thank you so much for the support and kindness that you have bestowed upon our family. And I brought with you, I know you weren't able to be with us, Mayor. Since some of you haven't seen it, I'll certainly pass it around. But I certainly want to thank you for the certificate of special recognition that you gave to Larry in his memory for all of his love of this city and this state and how he has supported it in so many ways. We can't thank you enough. Larry has, Larry worked and volunteered his voice and his broadcasting gifts, casting support to advocate for those agencies and organizations that meant so much to him and are certainly mentioned in the proclamation. I am grateful for the council and for what I understand is your leadership in partnering with the state and FEMA to help secure funding for improvements to the area at 50th, at 50th and Towana Drive. We appreciate the efforts and the dedication that you are, have given to support and improve that area. Where Larry lost his, where Larry lost his life, I lost the love of my life, and I also lost my life, had it not been for two angels. It is my hope that in addition to the improvements that are continued to being made in that area, that we will also be able to secure permanent fencing so that no one will ever have to go through what Larry and I went through that night. The evening of June 30th was to have been an evening filled of, filled with fun and laughter and being with our family as we were attending the Menace soccer game to hear me sing the national anthem. But our joy quickly turned to sadness as we were trying to race home to beat the storm. As we grew closer and closer to Beverdale, all access to our home, which was only minutes away, was blocked. Little did we know that our car would stop at what I call the belly of the beast. We did not know. Nor did the 911 operator know how perilous a situation we were facing when we got out of the car. I blame no one. But I believe that Public Measure A is a way for you and a way for this city to look for a win-win solution. We should never have to sacrifice public safety and homes and protecting our citizens for the other improvements that we've made to this city. Certainly, we are all proud of all the recognition that is given to Des Moines and for all that has occurred. But Public Measure A is correct. It is time for those who reside outside of our city pay for using our services. As I mentioned, I am certainly one who believes in win-win approaches and both-and strategies. And that's what Public Measure A does. It allows us to ask for public relief. It allows us to continue to work on those entertainment and beautification projects that make Des Moines such a wonderful place to live. But more importantly, it provides us that infrastructure funding to improve our roads, our bridges, sewers, and our neighborhoods. If there is any way to make sense of losing the love of my life, if Larry's death can bring light to the importance of how important it is to keep our citizens and homes protected, then his death would not have been in vain. So again, I want to thank you for all your kindness and for your support that has been given to our family during our time of loss. And again, thank you so much.
Deb, thanks for coming down.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cottler. Thank you. George Davis, Southwestern Hills Neighborhood Association, Mr. Mayor, council members. We also support the option sales tax. We call it the penny tax, and we've been embracing our neighborhood for the, well, ever since last fall regarding this. And the benefits far outweigh what we can get. People don't realize, I don't think, excuse me, a lot of times, people don't realize that the standard of keeping things the same or the standard of improving things, there's also inflationary costs involved. And moving forward, we live in a great city. We have great parks. We have great amenities throughout the city, a fantastic police department, fantastic fire department, and there's a cost that goes with that. And if you can tell me that you're going to roll back the tax base for homeowners, and you're going to freeze that back at 1664, and you're going to continue that process for, you know, the near future, I, I think it's a win-win situation. And as we get involved with our neighborhood, and we stay really involved with our neighborhood in Southwestern Hills, our board does, through emails, mailings, and Facebook, we've had tremendous support for it totally in the Southwestern Hills neighborhood. We call it the penny tax. And if you look at the penny, I mean, most of us, except for Councilman Gray, when you buy something at the store, you usually put two cents that you have left over. You put it in the, you put it in the jar, sorry. And then, also, the federal government was going to get rid of the penny, you know, a couple of years ago. The Mintz had a mission to get rid of the penny. So when you're talking the penny, and I realize people can stretch that out even, you know, over different courses, but man, this election coming up, the power of the penny dictates the future of Des Moines, and we fully support it, and I hope everyone else does. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, George. Thanks, George.
George, I'll be scrimping my pennies just so I can come out and enjoy Davis concessions out at the softball complex.
I love that.
John Royal, 1838th Street, Riverbend Neighborhood Association in Amos. We just want to thank you for the work you've done on looking forward to this project, taking on issues like crisis intervention for mental health, which has been one of those stagnant, everybody wanted to do it, but nobody would step forward, and you folks willing to step forward on that. It's been valuable as far as we're concerned. Taking on the library hours has been very valuable to us. I remember coming down to the library on Sundays to write my papers because I never did it beforehand, and that's not even an option for some of the kids now to do, and they're so much more dependent on that to increase those hours. And the fact of the matter is, we just have a lot of deferred maintenance. I live in a neighborhood that was platted in the 1880s. You know, the sewers are, the storm sewers and the, and the sanitary sewers run together, that sort of thing. That was, you know, what was happening in those days. It's kind of like having an old house. You never get a lot of excitement about putting a new furnace in or putting a roof on, but sometimes you have to do those things, and the sales tax allows us to do that. On my very block, and I live in a nice block, I have a house, three houses down, that's been vacant for four years. And it got that way pretty normally. There was an older lady who lived there. Her daughter lived with her, who was disabled. The woman died. Her daughter couldn't keep the house up. It became condemned because the foundation was broken, and we asked the city what they can do about it. Well, we have a list of 1,000 houses, you know, that need to be addressed, and we're able to take five to 10 down or 15 down a year. We don't know when we'll get to you. You know, a little farther away, they've got three houses that have been there for 10 years that are on that list. So being able to address these sort of things is really meaningful. There was a park named after my parents, Lewis &amp; Beer Royal, and we continually had equipment taken out because it was outdated and it didn't fit safety standards and all those sort of things, but there was never money to replace it. It finally became to the point where we had a basketball court where kids came and played late at night and kept the neighbors up, and people came through and passed drugs through there. So we finally closed the park down as opposed to being able to do that. So we don't have some of the services that we would really could use desperately in our neighborhoods. And I understand the, the strapped nature you have with trying to make things happen here, and really appreciate this, and Amos is very much behind this, so thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you for everything you do. Glad you, everybody standing involved.
Mayor, city council, Bob Mahaffey, 2020 East 32nd, Des Moines. I want to thank those who showed up tonight who support the one cent sales tax or the Public Measure A, or also known as Neighbors for Progress and Safety. We owe them a great deal of thanks for their efforts, and also the committee who's worked diligently on trying to improve the city of Des Moines, the, the residential areas, and also the safety aspect. I recall that during my 12 years on the council, we worked on a fire station out northeast. And as that area there continues to grow, there's more and more need for that fire station out there. And I may be a little selfish, too, because I live out pretty close to that area, and they were going to move the number three, but I see tonight you're addressing the needs for number three there, and that, that'll go forward. When you think that a one cent additional tax and that 33% plus will be paid by those visiting Des Moines, those using our tax-exempt properties, using the, the venues that's available, Civic Center, the Wells Fargo and, and the others, and driving on our streets and adding to the, the problems with our streets and that, we are really be thankful for the opportunity to raise that $37 million to address the needs of our, our infrastructure and that. So, want to just thank those who've been, who have worked diligently on this and hope we can get it passed and improve the, the area and the, the living conditions for those who live in the city of Des Moines. Thank you.
Bob, thank you, and your ears are service. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is James Andrew. I live at 1407 Linden Lane. Public Measure A, local option, sales and service tax. In the words of our honorable Senator Charles Grassley, let us pray to God, quote-unquote. Option is the key word. Are there no other options to main our, maintain our streets, public works and parks, other than raising taxes on our poor, the elderly, and our children? We already charge 6% on a poor person's disposable income to help maintain our public needs. Why charge them more? Maybe we could develop a system which identifies a household income. People could present a card during the time of purchase to determine the sales tax rate on their purchases. 3% for someone living in poverty, up to 10% for those making over $250,000 annually. Maybe an increase in property tax rates on homes valued greater than $250,000 would be a way of increasing revenues. Luxury tax on furs and boats over $5,000, cars over $35,000, and mobile homes valued over $50,000. A man, woman, or child earning a minimum wage of $7.25 an hour, working 40 hours per week, will make approximately $15,000 per year. For the sake of argument, I will use $250,000 annual income to represent a rich person. It will take the poor man, woman, or child 16.6 years to, to make what the rich person makes in just one year. Compare this to the rich person making $1 million annually, and it will take that poor person 66.3 years to make what that rich person makes in one year. What can be the reason behind taking money from poor to give to the rich? Does a rich person not have enough money to buy shoes or clothing? Do they need more money to buy food or to pay for childcare expenses? Or, or healthcare insurance or school supplies? Is your intent to take money from poor people so rich people can trade in their 2018 car for a new car with the latest gadgets? Or maybe the goal is to take money from the poor and give it to the rich so the rich are able to buy more stock, increase their retirement accounts, take more and longer We should be increasing taxes on the wealthy who have the resources to help maintain our infrastructures and so on. We already charge the poor, elderly, and our children 6% on their purchases for clothes, shoes, school supplies, and so on. We tax the poor on gas purchases, auto driver, and marriage licenses. You can't be assured that rental property owners include their expenses for property taxes and their rental fees they charge to their tenants. So in essence, renters pay property taxes as well. Taking money from the poor, the elderly, and riches so their money can be given to the rich is not what God intended. Doing what we can to help our children, the elderly, the poor, is an honorable thing to do. Taking from the poor to give to the rich is a disgrace. Bad fiscal decisions of the past, namely tax abatements to multi-billion dollar corporations and new construction, should not be, should not be strapped on the backs of the poor, the elderly, and our children. We do not need to take more money from the poor so we can give it to the rich. The rich already receive enough welfare and tax abatements, tax loopholes, and so on. Let us pray to God, and again, ask the people of our community to vote no on Public Measure A, local option, sales, and service tax with the acronym of LOST.
Thank you. Want to thank all the speakers for coming down this evening. It's really important work that we think that we do at this table, and certainly, I think a lot of you have spoken to that this evening. James, I hope that you'll take that same argument to Washington and see if you can't make some headway there, and hopefully that Charles will keep praying with you and it will help us out. Any rate, if somebody give us a motion to receive and file. All the comments, and again, thank you all for your, your comments this evening. And...
Mayor, at a time more appropriate than today, I, there were some suggestions made as part of the conversation, and maybe we could funnel those to the city manager and have a little conversation about those. Some, some in particular are specific improvements, and I'd, I'd like to see us make some action on, on those.
Absolutely. If you could vote on your motion there, that'd be good.
Yes.
All right. Takes us to item 41. Item 41 is amendment to the schedule of fees for the following, Chapter 60 Housing Code, which is A. B is Chapter 46, which is tent permits, Council Communication Number 19-085. Anybody here to make any comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I see none. I'd just like to applaud our city manager and his staff to kind of go over some of these things that we'll kind of group together. I know these tent permits, I have the privilege of serving on the Art Festival Committee, and this fee increased 300% this year without this, without this change. So, you know, the bigger events can probably be able to afford something like that. Some of the smaller events wouldn't, that were set up the exact same way for years and years. So I appreciate your work on this, Scott, and your staff. I will move 41A and B.
I appreciate those comments. Fire Department was very creative in putting this together.
Yeah, thank you, Chief.
Six yes?
All right. Take this to, we have an extra item, which is a request from our council member Joe Gatto to speak, to discuss snow removal on sidewalks. Council member?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just, I would like a review of our policy. I, I'm getting mixed signals from staff, and even when I've called in on, on different sidewalks that hasn't been touched, and, you know, we've received 24 inches of snow this, just this month alone. And I know that's a significant amount of snow, but there are businesses, there are homeowners that are done. They're not shoveling anymore, and they're creating a hazard with some of the businesses, especially where they'll plow and they'll push it into the sidewalk, and then it's, it's difficult to, to open that up. I don't, I don't know if, I've been told that we're not shoveling any snow, and instances where out-of-state people own property, they would send them a notice, and by the time the notice would get back, that, you know, they really don't ever remove the snow. It basically has to melt. So I need to know exactly what I need to tell our constituents that are calling and complaining and wondering why sidewalks aren't being cleared off. So if you can just get back to us with a, a policy, and if we need to have a policy changed, hopefully it doesn't snow anymore and
That is supposed to be.
Mother Nature does its trick and gets rid of it, but for the coming years, as we go along, it would be helpful that everyone has a clear, clearly knows what's the fine, how much time you have to remove it off your sidewalks, and who's responsible for removing it.
I 100% agree, and I'll give Bill some credit. He and I were in an exchange that he started today about a couple of properties that would be in, in close proximity to our house. And then I think Connie did a nice thing today, helping the city by making an appointment to the Access Advisory Board, and I just think we've got to do better than just talk.
Yeah. And it can't be
I mean, we, we want to spend a lot of money on sidewalks and all that, but that isn't worth a damn if we don't keep them clear and help people that really need it. And the only thing I'd add to what you were saying, Joe, is the city has to bring its A-game to, and both on enforcement of private property, but taking care of public property.
And complaint base isn't probably cutting it at this point.
Well, that's it. The, the repeat offenders
Yeah.
Is my, my big question, right? I mean, folks that, if you've got 24 inches accumulated, we, we can tell, even though we're maybe just approaching 48 hours since our last snow, we know that there might have been one or two or three snows that you missed along the way. And some of these folks, even if they got, I mean, I don't think the ticket's too much. So
I don't think we've issued any tickets.
Have we not issued anything? No, I know that's not true. Someone, someone told me that he got hit.
$172?
$172, notice it's happened, so now that we know.
But those aren't tickets, right? Those are just
$50 fine.
They are $50 fines. Excellent.
I, I received the policy in the, by email. Bill asked for it. Failure to clear sidewalks, $50 the first time, 75 second, 100 the third and fourth, fifth, et cetera. Pushing snow into the right of way, which is Bill's problem, 100, then 150, then 200. I, I
Who removes it? If it's an out-of-town person that owns the property and
Nobody's
They don't maintain their yard, and they don't maintain sidewalk. Who, who's responsible? Polk County Weed Commissioner has to maintain certain properties, and, and so who's going to clear the sidewalk, I guess, is my question.
Somebody should be clearing it and then charging them for that clearance.
Exactly. But I don't think that's happening.
Well, that's something I think we need staff to look at. How can we get these things cleared, and then you find them accordingly?
Charge them for clearing it and then find them on top of it.
Absolutely.
We, we talked
Be helpful.
Well Yeah, I think we had a pretty good conversation about the need for sidewalks and a priority on busier streets, where there's multiple lanes, where there might be dark routes. Those are areas where we should be out, especially for these vacant properties, and, and issuing citations. The, the clock ends 7:00 PM Tuesday for the most recent snow, so they have 48 hours to clear it.
I was basically told by, sorry, Jonathan, not by you, but by your staff, I just called in like another citizen, that it really is not going to do any good, because by the time the guy gets the notice in California, it's probably going to be gone, and we're not going to shovel it anyway, so. Basically blew me off, so that's why we're talking about it today. And I just called in like Joe Blow public, and that's what I got. So I can't imagine anyone else doing it.
If I can offer an immediate answer to your question of, of who removes the snow, Jonathan Gaynor, Public Works Director, the, the code does have a provision that the city may elect to forcibly remove the snow and assess the cost of that removal to the property owner. It does require 24 hours' notice, a posting on the property. That posting can't happen until 20, the 48-hour window has expired, then there's another 24 hours, and then we may go in and remove the snow. And they have the same right through administrative hearings as otherwise. We've not had very many windows where that 48 hours was plus 24, hasn't turned into more snow during the last month. So the ability has been pretty limited, and as soon as we get new snow, the enforcement of the last snow is, is, is off the table. So it's, it's a very narrow window to be able to address. But, but we're, part of our, our unified snow plan rewrite over the course of the summer, we'll be looking at opportunities to shorten that and find those repeat offenders who are the bad actors.
Yep.
The first ticket will catch almost anybody that has a reasonable neighborly neighbor and, and, you know, lives in their home, but the out-of-town property owners, those who just don't care, as we escalate those fines and then backcharge the fees to them. And we can look at successively, you know, if, the code is written, it stops, it stops escalating at three. There's no reason it has to stop at three. If they're going to be a, a bad neighbor, we can do different, we can do that differently.
Can we, can we treat commercial properties differently than residential properties in that, on this? You know, I'm thinking of a particular commercial property where their parking lot was pristine, so they clearly had someone, paid someone to clear out their parking lot, and then the sidewalks weren't touched.
That would be my issue too. And I've got, I've got somebody who, I mean, I've sent lots of pictures, and I've sent them to Jonathan. These are businesses that are not clearing their sidewalks.
We'll bring that up as part of the conversation in work sessions. Get Legal's opinion on that as well.
Yep.
We'll do that quickly.
Good job, Jonathan. Your staff's been, thumbs up.
Been a tough winter for it, too.
Yeah, 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 it's been
I seen one of those new trucks, actually.
Getting good reports back.
One, one with a broken plow or?
No, they fixed that one.
They did?
But there was, they, they did have some
So Joe, do you have some sort of a request?
Yeah, I'm going to refer it back to the city manager to workshop, and then we can, we can talk about some solutions that, and some different maybe policy ordinance that need to be put in place, but I'm going to refer that back to you to have a discussion with the seven of us, and then we can hopefully, that's my motion.
Okay. Everybody go with that?
Yes.
Linda?
Thank you, Joe.
Ms. Coleman?
I'll have your color.
Seven yes?
All right. To everybody, thank you all for attending this evening, and look forward to seeing you next time. But unless anybody has anything else, Mr. Manager, do you have anything? Mr. Manager? Do you have anything?
No.
All right. Let's, this means adjourned.